I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all. Glad to meet you, both of you, and audio tape. Would you gentlemen, if anybody else is, Mr. Rowe, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Nation, meeting minutes.
Yes. Mr. Vice Chairman, I motion to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from January seventeenth, 2019. That was a special town meeting at Quayby Regional. As writ.
Second. Motion's been made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I also make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of January twenty-two, 2019.
Second. Motion's been made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's your thought, sir?
Respondents. The office received a letter of interest from Rachel Kearney requesting permission to be appointed to the Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission also provided a letter of recommendation and support of the appointment.
Okay, they only have one vacancy, correct? I'm fine with her serving. I appreciate the fact that she's got full.
Any volunteers?
Yeah. Excellent. Thank you, your motion. I'm going ahead, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to appoint Rachel Kearney to the Conservation Commission.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna skip the hearing, it says not seven fifteen, sir. I'm gonna go to second quarter FY nineteen ambulance abatements, sir. Single fire chief.
All right. Mr. Vice Chairman, I make a motion to approve the second quarter FY nineteen ambulance abatements in the amount of $217,496.97.
Okay with that. I don't know, fire chief, is there any questions?
Uh, just a note, I noted on there, that one's a little bit higher than normal. That represents write-offs that I approved since 2014. Those are, a lot of the patients have since passed away or whatnot, so at this point, we're just not gonna collect them, so we decided to go ahead and abate them outright.
That was in December?
That was, yes, that was last month. I took a long look through our abatement list and just made the decision that it's just not worth our time to try to collect them anymore.
Understood. Do we have a motion? Are you seconding it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the contract award for fountain fuel and signs for the heating oil and the diesel fuel, and number two to vote for the diesel fuel. Currently, the heating oil number two was at eleven cents per gallon, and ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel is at eleven cents per gallon over the tank car price, so.
Yeah, over the tank car price.
Over the tank car price, yes. I'm both, excuse me. So, any questions? General? You good?
Good.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All right, sir. Sir. Number five. Uh, next, sir, we have the discussion with regards to a possible vote with regards to the creation of a fund account for healing. So, this is in regards to the $5,000 that we agreed upon with healing for legal expenses, so to create this account would be for us, creation of the account would allow for us to draw from that when legal bills come up. Um, if we don't exhaust all of that money, money would, after, that would be returned to them, but it's just to set up the account so we can, the account can draw from that to pay legal for healing, so the board has to approve, um, the fund account, is the wording we're gonna use, correct? Not gift account, fund account, uh, for the creation of this, so we can utilize that. So, is there any further discussion or questions or concerns from anybody?
This is to negotiate the host agreement.
Right.
Good.
So, I make a motion that we approve the fund account for healing, in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we still got ten minutes. Ratify the signature on the contract reimbursement for the bulletproof vest partnership, vote expected, which I've already signed. This is just to ratify that agreement that is here, sir. The bulletproof vest. Any questions, concerns? Motion?
Make a motion to ratify, uh, contract reimbursement for a bulletproof vest partnership.
I will second the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're going to warrants, sir.
Warrants. Mr. Vice Chairman, make a motion to accept warrant number sixty-one for payroll in the amount of $51,000, $118.66 dated one-twenty-eight, 2019, and vendor warrant number sixty-two for $784,608.62 of the same date.
Second. Motion's been made in second and any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All right, we have six minutes, sir. Your business. If you have anything to say, I'll add.
I have nothing to add, but.
All right, I got a couple things. Um, I had, wanted to discuss the wage classification, and I'm happy you're here. Did you receive a copy of it, Barry? So, um, I'm, the board is looking to present to the town this year a new wage classification to go along with the state's request for the $15 minimum wage over the next four years. Um, so I drafted up, took our current wage classification, put in new numbers to meet the requirements, had to make some adjustments on. People are already over that amount to be somewhat equitable, I guess, in, in how this formulas were, would be put forward. I shared it with our office, I'm not sure if you received the copy yet or not. Um, FinCom has it, so I'm just looking for some input or questions. The town accountant called me with one question that she had regarding something, so it was just a, a typo change with the assistant, um, clerk's position that got moved. We moved that over to the correct C three or C two, whichever one it was. So, if there's anything, Barry, or any questions that a department might have regarding it, um, I'm looking for the board to tentatively agree to it, so we can at least put it out to the departments that'll have something to work with moving forward. Keep in mind, if this isn't approved on the town meeting floor, I guess that would mean that the town is not gonna accept the request for minimum wage increase to fifteen, because municipalities are exempt if we wanted to stay with the old wage scale. That could happen on the floor. So, I think the departments need to understand that. I would budget a high, assuming that budget for the amount that we're gonna perform with the new classification, but it could be voted down at the town floor and we might just stick with the current, yes?
Can I just, I, I didn't see that, so can I just?
Well, it hasn't, it's only gone to FinCom, our office. We haven't released it to departments yet. I just wanted to make sure that FinCom, our office had it, the town accountant, just gonna look over some of the numbers, but we're gonna be looking to.
I thought I missed an email, I'm sorry.
Nope, it hasn't gone out yet, it's just a draft. I just want everybody to be aware of it. If there's any questions or concerns, or it doesn't look, if the numbers look, you know, a little off or something, I guess, um, you know, I have, each square actually has its, pretty much its own calculations to be fair and equitable to everybody, you know, the ones that are below 1275 are automatically at that point, so you had to adjust everybody down the ten steps out of. So, it was, each square was its own individual handle, but this will get us where we need to be for the next three years and allow us minimal increases for the last two years to get us to that fifteen in 2022, or whatever it is. So, this would take us out of the current kind, current agreement, the wage scale, which has a year left, and start us new. So, it would bump the minimum of the 1275, because we're already at 12 January one, so we have to, if it's approved, retro those people who are below it. So, I put it out as getting us to 1275 before January one of 2020, so we don't have to go through this again. So, we're kinda jumping up one year to get ahead of it.
Okay.
So, it'll be explained, but I do have notes, detailed notes and everything I did, so if people are questioning how I came up with them, especially FinCom, if I need to attend one of your meetings maybe, and go over the notes on how I came up with the percentages and how we did it, it's kinda aligned with what we're doing for police right now, um, so I, I think it's, I think it's fair and equitable. I just wanted to point it out that we are looking to introduce that this year. Uh, and the other thing is, I'm working on a couple employment agreements, one being the fire chief, and one being the town accountant who's expiring this June also, so hoping to meet, I put an email out to the chief and the town accountant to meet with them. I've given them both drafts of some of the little changes I was proposing, and then I still haven't sat and met with them, and I wanna try and get that done for them before February, so it's budget season, we know what to expect, and get those employment agreements done. Those are the two things that I had tonight, sir. I don't have anything else. You're all set? We have five minutes.
Just a question on the, the new wage scale classification. Uh, when can we get it out to the department heads for their review, so that if they do have any comments and concerns, they can be brought forth before the budget season actually?
My opinion would be, is probably next, I should probably go to the next FinCom meeting and meet with them and go over with them, you know, um, grade by grade, just so they're on board with this and it's approved with them, and they're okay with it, and then bring it back to our board, and we just need to agree that we're gonna release this. It's still gonna be a town meeting vote that has to approve this, but, um, as long as they're okay with what those numbers are, it can come back to us and we're okay, and then we can release it to everybody, um, and, and we're good to go. So, I think it could be shortly. I don't know, when's your next meeting, Barry, or?
We haven't said it yet, because I'm still working on trying to get, I worked with Madeline today on the wage changes for 2020, and there are two people, two, two classifications which are still under $12.
Yes.
For this year.
Yep.
So, we need to address that first. Then, we went through all of the step increases for each department, um, and so once I do the preliminary calculations for those employees, um, then we're gonna expect to see those budgets come back to us.
So, those few that we have that are actually under the current 12 right now, I think is gonna be an article on special, but then I'm thinking, if we don't approve it at the annual, we don't have to retro those people back. I mean, if the town doesn't approve the new wage scale, they would remain where they are.
So, yeah, but we're in, we're in 2019, and the, and if you're going to get to $12 an hour for everyone across the board, it seems only fair that those two classifications should be brought up.
Right.
To the 12, and that means this year, not next year.
Right, but I'm saying, I'm putting it at 1275 to start for the new wage scale, because that's what'll be January one of 2020, next January, so those people that are below it now, we have to retro them, because they're below it from January to June thirtieth, but I don't know if we have to put that before the annual, because it's a special, and then whatever happens at the annual, if the town turns around and says, no, we're not approving that wage scale, we're staying where it was, we just approved to give them money if it did, I don't know.
But it's only those two classifications.
Yeah, so, it's out there, so your next meeting, if you just let me know, or maybe put me in a chat, I'll come in and just go over if the committee has questions and we can address it and, you know, make sure everything was good before.
The report, the report that we'll put forward will be with the current wage changes. We can't put the new wage classification that you're proposing into that budget proposal, because it affects the next year.
Right.
So, we need to be able to have some kind of a report to the people to let them know the impact of that per year and then over the four-year, well, it's.
Yep.
It's twenty, it's 2023 is when the fifteen comes, isn't it?
Yes, by 2022, FY twenty-three, the biggest impact's gonna be this next year, our biggest percentage of an increase.
Well, I saw a $56,000 increase. That sounds kinda high.
It's, based on the number of employees times six percent, that's where we'd be.
Yeah, but why are we giving them a six percent raise?
Well, it's not six for everybody, I mean, you're, you're anywhere between three and six, because going from, to get them to 1275, it's almost an eight percent jump on some of those lower earners. So, let's say we take somebody, and then we have a minute, let's say we take somebody, we put them at 1275, and then on this grade right next to it, they're already at 1275. What are you adjusting these people to that are actually above this person? What's the equitable amount to get them up a little bit more and keep them higher than that, because it's a higher grade? So, you're getting, it's, the average came out to almost five percent this first bump, just to get them in line, and then it was like a two-two, and we were okay for three years, but I can explain it more at FinCom. Brian, real quickly with a question, 'cause I got a minute.
The fire chief's here, so I just wanted to ask him, when it comes to negotiating your contract, Adam, if you don't get what you want, are you gonna get a lawyer and try and sue the town? Threat, threaten to sue the town?
We hope he will not do that. Adam, Adam in the town negotiating.
Well, is that the way it's going with the chief of police?
I don't know anything about it, Brian, it's not my.
Well, I, I do, so, but why, so that's a question for the selectmen, okay? In all honesty, why is it good for one, but not for everybody? Okay, only 'cause you let it happen.
Okay, sir, so we have a hearing right now, a poll hearing, and I have to go into at seven fifteen. We have the representative from National Grid here. Um, we have a request for permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protective fixtures along and across the following public ways. I'm just moving forward any further. Um, we are going into the hearing right now, so we need a motion back to the hearing.
Um, just to open.
Motion to open the hearing, John.
Make a motion to open the hearing, discuss the poll.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're in the hearing. Um, the location approximately is, approximately is shown as attached. Um, this is actually on Cronin Road, and if I'm not mistaken, it's a new pole, correct?
Correct.
This is Patna, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, thank you for coming out tonight. Um, this is a new pole, is that replacing the existing, and the reason for the new pole, is it just for a service for, this is on Cronin, right, for new homes?
Yep, for a new home, yep.
So, and I don't know if we have anybody from Cronin Road here that has any questions, or does anybody else have any questions while we have National Grid here? Uh, it's a new pole for those new homes that are going up down Cronin Road. The guide wires, are the guide wires, correct, to, or, will they be on that pole?
Pole's wire, sir.
Yeah, I'm not seeing, I, I mean, I just, I see the pole on the map.
Yeah, when they, when we petition, it is for a future.
Could be for those things.
If we ever needed to change it. The wire size book for right now, it appears that it would just be a straight line without a guide wire.
So, Mr. Nation, do you have any questions regarding the request from National Grid? I don't either, seeing them, we're all set to go?
Motion to go.
Motion to approve? Oh, sorry, do you have anything else to do with your hand? No. Motion to approve the new pole listed on Cronin Road? Motion's been made in second, any further discussion?
Is there anything, anything wrong with it with regard to highway? Is it within their guidelines for highway?
Yeah, I, pound a little better, I mean, I know exactly where this location is, I don't think there's an issue. Adam, no issues with you?
It's just existing, I think, just looking to replace it, that's all, yeah.
Oh, it's an exist, it's a.
No.
Oh, it's a new.
Is, is a new one completely?
It's a new pole, yeah.
I mean, I know.
About 222 feet from the intersection of Richmore Lot Two.
I don't have an issue with that.
So, seeing no more, any further discussion? Motion's been made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Good to go, thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So, motion to close the hearing at seven nineteen back. Second? All in favor? All right.
Can I ask one additional question, going back to our, the, with regards to the wage scale, now that we're out of that? Uh, so, just for planning purposes, are we going to be asked, or should I anticipate putting together two different budgets, one with?
My, my personal opinion would be is put it with the new. Once we, once FinCom asks us to approve something, I would put it with the new, because worst case scenario, if it's not approved, you've already got a running budget, if we're back on the old figures, it'll just be extra in there, I mean, it's gonna be confusing if we do two.
I wouldn't do two.
I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm starting to put that.
I would go forward with the current classification as it's writ. The, the, the article needs to be written that we are going to go to the new classification.
Right, it'll be in the, I mean, this budget, part of the, the board.
But, but Adam's asking you to budget with the new figures.
Yeah, 'cause you're saying new.
I think he, my personal opinion, I think he should budget new, I think it's gonna pass.
Well, I, I mean, if you're gonna have a meeting amongst it, I'm sure it'll come.
We are, I mean.
I'm just, I'm just asking, just for direction.
But remember, we did that once before, where we put money into the budget, and counsel had made a statement that we had, we had voted twice for the same amount of money. If you pre-put that money into the budget before the article is passed, it means you're double spending, so you have to, you have to vote the budget as it is with regard to the previous article, then you bring the article forward to pass the omnibus budget.
I'm not sure on that one, but my opinion is, is if we, and we can just have this discussion, if you approve the higher amount.
We just wanna do it the right way, that's all.
Right, if you approve the higher amount and then it's not approved, we're, so you're paying somebody $11 an hour instead of 1275, at the end of the year, you're gonna have $200 in that employee's salary line, in that salary line, extra, because we budgeted, you budgeted for a higher amount.
All right, well, I'm just.
I don't wanna amend every budget on the floor to lower it after, after bowls.
We just have to make sure with counsel.
Yep.
That that's done right, because that's everybody's budget.
Yep, and the hope is, is to have this out this month, that, well, going in the beginning of February, have it out, so you guys have plenty of time to, to digest those new rates and whatnot. And then, and the, the same thing held three years, step increase after three, it's just an increase in all the, the lines themselves. All right, anything else, folks, on that one? No? You have other, your business, right? Nothing, sir? All right, we have room two, how many concerns? Yes, sir?
Yeah, it's just, uh, three simple questions, so keep it brief. Um, it's, it's been a rumor around town that selectmen have terminated, supposedly terminated the employment agreement of the chief police, chief of police, uh, and was curious if the board has any, um, answer as far as the new employment, or whether he will or not be, or just curious what's, I guess, what the current status is, that is, to kinda, you know, answer the rumors.
So, we're, we haven't been able to release anything, and we're currently working on that with that employee at this point in time, and that employee's employment in the future will be determined shortly.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good, very, thank you. And then the second question, it's also brought to my attention that Officer LaFleur was going to be the school resource officer at Quabog, and then I just heard something from a resident meeting running in from at the post office, that they heard that he wasn't appointed that, so don't know if you can answer that question?
So, that is a position with Quayby Regional School District, not with, in the town or under our jurisdiction, however, whatever they're dealing with hiring or whatnot of a person is kinda on them, we really can't answer for, I would recommend maybe contacting the superintendent of the school committee on that one.
Okay.
I can't, I can't expand on his employment with them or not.
No, I just didn't understand that one, okay.
No, I appreciate it, but you probably have to contact them.
Yeah, okay, and then the third question was, is regarding the records from Rutland Regional Dispatch Center, is there any agreement in place between the police or fire department or anybody, that any type of incident reports or police reports have to be, have to come from the town of Warren, or is there some agreement in place that they're not allowed to give them, or, or because we have the agreement, they are supposed to supply all records connected to anything in dispatch?
Okay, so hopefully I got this right, so if it's a record, like, let's say, a person was requesting a record from the regional dispatch, which we belong to.
Yeah.
I would assume that that would be a public records request, 'cause they're working for a municipality and a public record, and they should probably have a records access officer in Rutland. Their records access officer should be able to handle any requests for records. We can't, we can't supply them for you from Warren, it would have to come from Rutland direct, I would imagine.
Whether the custodian of the records.
Custodian of records are from Rutland, not from Warren, but there's no agreement, I mean, there's no agreement between the town and Warren that we would do records for them or anyone, that it has to come directly from Rutland.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
That's the records access law, so.
Oh, okay, well, I was just trying to understand that right, because since they're dispatching for us, I'm assuming, 'cause they're still dispatching for Warren, but I'm assuming that they're using Rutland computers located in Rutland in the, in the database or whatever, I'm not sure if that's property of Rutland or property of Warren, or, or do you know what the contract?
It's part of Rutland dispatch, but it's, you know, we're a part of that, we don't own it, but.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but.
It's their property, I would assume, and the records would come from them.
Okay.
All right.
So, so does that mean that the contract that the town signed with them, that means, is there, I guess what I'm asking, when that contract was signed that they are dispatching for us, is there any specific wording in there that says that they're responsible for providing the records from that point on forward, or no?
No, just for services.
Just for services, only, records request are, they would fall under the same Massachusetts general laws that we fall under, and they would have to provide it, only services only.
See the employees, nothing like that.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay, so, so basically, the, any inquiries would be from the future would be directly to them?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I need to, all right, thank you very much.
Mr. Corvus?
How much does the town pay to have these meetings taped? Or, or, listen, how, how much does the tax money put towards this cable TV, whatever you wanna call it? I don't know.
Well, that's through Comcast, it's through the user.
How much do we, how much do we pay them every year?
It's through your fan, uh, franchise fees.
Yeah, it's, I, I don't know that off the top of my head, but it's.
So, come on, come on, somebody knows, Barry.
But it is through the user fees of Comcast, I mean.
How much taxes are, the user fees are what pay the majority of their budget?
How much are they, what I'm asking?
So, but what you see on the bottom of your Comcast bill, Brian, if you have Comcast cable, there's user fees on it.
What does the town of Warren pay them?
We know, they're, it's coming out of the user fees.
I'm a user of Comcast, so.
It's coming out of the user.
On my bill, I pay the user fees.
Not through the tax.
To support it.
No, it's in your tax, or.
It's not, it's not paid by the taxpayers, it's paid by the people at Comcast.
I'm just wondering, the audio wasn't on three times on the replay from the last meeting?
I'll ask, uh.
So, I mean, how do you solve that problem?
Well, if it goes through Warren Cat directly, we'd have to speak to them, but it is paid through Comcast user fees, not the taxpayer. Each person who's.
So, that's why, I don't know what the solution would be to, for, you know.
It's to talk to Comcast, or, excuse me, talk to.
Call Comcast.
Warren Cat Direct and find out what's going on.
Call Comcast.
And I know they're going through some upgrades too, though, Brian, they are looking to upgrade some of the equipment.
Okay, I'm gonna call Mr. Comcast tomorrow.
You do that.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
I have one. I was given a, I was sent a request by the chief of police for records for his 2014 through 2019 budgets.
For the audit?
For the audit. Um, I was concerned, I talked to Becky a little bit about it today, that I didn't get it in the form of an R O A request. Um, as I started working on that, to get that documentation put together, there are years where four different budgets were submitted because of just.
Changes.
Changing of documentation. I need to know how in-depth that has, that information has to be, and furthermore, he asked for budget requests and current budgets and budgets approved. That's all part of the town reports.
Right.
The town, you know, the FinCom reports. Um, I'm not really sure why he's requesting that of myself or Madeline.
I think he's, I'm not speaking for the chief, but I think it's because the auditors need this information, and it's probably best if it comes from, you know, the finance committee or the town account. I would say the book itself, your FinCom book with the final amounts that are approved for those years would suffice for the amounts that are approved. Budget requests for what he had submitted that may not have been approved, although there's some changes, I wouldn't be confusing them and giving them forward. Whatever one that was put forward should probably match the FinCom book, I mean, there might have been some amending of something in there one of those years, but they should pretty much coincide, and I think it's just they're looking at that to see our payroll because it's a labor audit, you know, as to what we expended for years in the staffing levels, and that they need, it's five years, correct? They're requesting, um, so I think that's why the request came before you guys, and I think the FinCom book was suffice, along with the budget that he presented to you guys at the budget meetings for those years. Do you have those?
I have copies, but as I said, from one meeting to another to another, uh, rates